The roll call by the clerk. Mitchum, Kenny, Eric, Jaeger, Vanish, here. Ron Campbell, here. Jerry, Landville.
Here.
String me through the pledge of allegiance.
I put the United States of America into the republic. With the thirteen and justice law.
Public Pursuit of J. Johnson, statute nineteen point eight four. Motion by jury and a petition by Schmidt. I oppose. Motion passes. And the first thing on our agenda is the policy development and review. First reading of policy one six three point seven. Public comments at board meetings changes. Yeah.
Herb, can you link that quick?
Yes.
So, um, we talked about implementing a few things during our public comments period. This is not really in particular order, it's in my notes this way, but um, you're going to be a little more strict with our three minute cutoff. As far as people bringing things to the table, we're going to actually get like an egg timer to you so that when the time goes off, it ends up. Everyone that comes to the meeting will have to sign in on a sign in sheet. They'll need to provide their name and address and prove that they're residents either within district or parents or guardians of students in the district. And they will need to address the topic that they're going to talk about. We are. We're also going to. In our policy, it says that we may authorize the viewing of meetings online and you're going to recommend the way that we no longer put meetings on YouTube.
Well, we don't have a policy.
Oh.
And that's actually not in this at all. That'll be addressed at the next meeting. So, the only other thing is the board may restrict repetitive appearances.
Yes, thank you. Yes, so the first thing was that we can restrict, the board may restrict repetitive. Repetitive. Thank you, experiences regarding the same topic, but no new information provided. And the other thing was, sorry.
I think that was it, actually.
Oh, and unused time cannot be reallocated to someone else. So if people are, if they don't use their three minutes, they can't give their two minutes to someone to make it five minutes. They're just restricted to that three minutes.
I think so. And those things are all changed and policies right there.
So, I guess with that, I would like to make a motion that we approve the first reading of policy changes for policy one sixty three point seven regarding our public comments at board meetings.
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading.
Okay, so Asher made a motion, we'll just need a second.
One second.
We have a motion by Jaeger and a second by Landville to approve the first reading of the changes to policy one sixty three point seven. The public comments at board meetings. Is there any discussion? All those on paper, could you say aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes and on to new business discussions and review of long range changes. Thank you all for coming and joining us and helping us with this. It's, I don't know, Josh, could we bring it to the table?
You bet.
Have them come up.
On the table?
Get a little edge.
Sure.
Kenny, you get to come up here too.
Josh, I'll just put a chair here. I'll be happy to share my table with this gentleman.
Here we go.
Oh, if you want to start just telling us who you are. So everybody knows I know him, Kenny Asher, who used to be on the board. I asked him here because he is familiar with doing some of the building projects in the past and had some information regarding things we've used previously. And then, Mr. Mike Comkey from Dodgeville, thank you for coming.
Yeah, and Mrs. Carrie Schrader, she's one of our board members also, and the two of us have worked quite a bit in the last two projects that we've done, so if I don't understand something, Carrie will be able to back me up.
Great, thank you.
More disagree with than one word.
Works a lot.
Well, thanks for going, appreciate it.
Yeah, more than that, to share the experience. Curious what it is that you're looking at and how you're going to know.
So, who is the terror of the building grounds? So, friends, if you could, because I am not completely versed in what all the projects, all I've talked about with.
Mostly like some heating, cooling upgrades. What else?
Were you thinking possibly a genuine shop?
Shop, either possibly, you know, obviously just spitballing, but upgrading a shop, it's way overdue. We want to keep where it's at, we want to look at an agricultural building. Outside of the building and renovating our shop to something else. As you mentioned, HVAC, all those things. Just maintenance updates, I guess, that costs a lot of money.
So, I think where we are stuck is a company, and somebody help me out with the name of it. Upper ninety was brought in at the end of last year. That was in the spring. Okay, in the spring. And kind of came and talked to us about, you know, doing a lot of that front end stuff for us. And I don't think any of us really knew if that was worthwhile.
Front end stuff, meaning marketing piece and helping you with informing the public kind of stuff. So, I will speak on that and say that that was invaluable for us. I think the process that we went through, we tried to be as transparent with the public as we could. And in our first referendum, that transparency meant inviting them into the building and unlocking every door. So the things we usually try to hide a little bit from the public, we made sure that they saw. So, we opened the boiler room doors, we opened the door to everything we could, and we took them around and we said, that's part of our problem and we need to fix it. So.
And that's what we did, it was showing everybody. We said we need to do this in the referendum, we were going to open up every room so you can see what those issues are. We opened up the ceilings. We had the ceilings missing for what, six months? So that engineering, pre-engineering, they could come around and take a look and see everything that was up on the roof. The key to us passing was bringing a team early on board. We worked with Myron and HSR, Myron the construction company and HSR the architectural firm out of La Crosse. And the team that they put together came in and helped us with the pre-referendum and referendum, publishing information and getting it up to the public. Flyers, things like that. And then we also did a survey with perceptions, school perceptions.
There is one of our board members that doesn't want us to ever do anything again without doing the public survey. He wants everything to be surveyed.
And the thing that we realized with that survey is the information that you get back isn't just good for your construction project. It's good for your district as a whole, because you're going to get information from the public about things that you don't even realize, the public thinks you need to do in the school. They could actually change your scope based on what you get back on the survey. Our survey told us that we would pass a referendum at fifty one percent. We passed a referendum at fifty one percent. I mean, it was right on.
So, the company, the HSR company is who helped you?
HSR and Myron combined helped us.
But like with the front end, I mean.
The front end.
You guys picked them, Myron and HSR.
They came in, they came in and they interviewed.
Okay.
Myron came in, we had Kramer, and was there another construction firm?
Yeah, we had Fin Door.
Fin Door. And so they came in before the whole board and we chose Myron to go with. And why we went with them is they had a really good front sided presentation on, here's what we're going to do with the public. Here's how we're going to handle this, here's how we're going to do this, the other companies haven't had that yet.
So they helped us with the marketing pieces, so they hired it. Yes, they had a designer that helped us with the marketing pieces that helped formulate, you know, school perceptions did the survey, but they helped us decide what questions to use on the survey. They were, they were really instrumental in how to interact with the public, because prior to that, the way that the board, I was not on the board prior to that, but the way the board interacted with the public was we, they stood and did a presentation. So they invited you in and you could come in and here, watch our presentation, this is what we need. And the public made it clear in not attending those meetings that that was not how they wanted to get their information.
Okay.
So, then we opened the doors.
So if you had, oh, sorry. If you had Myron and they helped with that front end, why did you feel the need to use HSR?
HSR to design their projects.
Also, they didn't do any of the front end stuff, that was all.
They only helped back up what Myron was doing.
Yeah, so.
They would print the pieces that we could display.
And we had a relationship with HSR already, so they had already been working with us. But from the actual GC side, we wanted to see what our options were. And so then we had those companies come in and the board had some conversation.
So did you guys have anyone when? So Myron did your construction, right? So did you have anyone as a checkpoint for their work? For example, we have a guy named Tom Grendeski when we did our mosque, and he worked with Myron and Myron did our building, our newest one. Which is not new anymore, but anyway. But he was a check, because obviously I don't have, none of the board have, you know, Kenny was the only one previously on the board that had any knowledge of, hey, that's not right. How do we know, I don't know if they're doing it right or not, I would, I would know if I'm on time, you know, someone as a check, or did you just trust Myron and you're happy with it?
Yeah.
I mean, we had, HSR also had engineers on site that would come on every, every other week on our first project and on the second project, it was every week. Someone came on site for the auditorium and the gym project. So we always had someone in the backside coming back and looking at the work. Making sure things looked the way they were supposed to be built, the way that was designed.
Yeah, and we may have been in there every day or so. And we also had our maintenance director that was onsite and was making sure that he understood what was happening as well. But because Myron and HSR are not partners, they did check each other.
Right.
So, it was good.
Can I ask if you had a, did you have a timetable and would it be completed and was there deductions if they didn't get it done in that timeframe?
Um, I think there were deductions, but we've always left the timetables. So we didn't have any issues, we always tried to make it so that things were ready the first week in September. And, you know, there's little things that clean up and touch up paint and stuff, but construction itself was done, you could get into the facilities each time on the date that they said.
Carrie, my good, did they, did Myron come in and do like the facility study for you and said, this is what we're going to, what we're recommending? Or did you guys do that through another party or you did it yourself?
We did some of that work ourselves, but we also had pre, we had, HSR had done a facility study for us.
Okay, so.
Years ago, so we already knew some of the things that we wanted to go with.
So the architect.
Yeah, HSR had done some, but we also knew that we wanted to add some spaces also.
And we had a failed referendum.
Yeah.
For a new school.
Okay.
So we did try to go to referendum to build new, and that referendum failed. So we knew what we felt we were missing and, and then that survey, the next go around really told us what the public believed we were missing.
And we learned from that referendum that failed on the new school, the community said, we want the school to be updated, we don't want a new school. And when we followed that lead and with the help of HSR and Myron, it took us where we needed to go.
When you say that you opened the doors and showed, did you have like several days where you did that?
They guided tours. So, we had folks that knew the building and knew the intent well enough that we invite, at ours, we invited people in and we did guided tours and showed them all of the black eyes, showed them everything that, you know. We had a nineteen sixty three building, I'm guessing this building's similar-ish? No? No, ninety, the whole building is?
This one, this half, the other half was exposed.
Got it. So, we had, you know, old boilers, we had a hot water heating system, we had tunnels. We had, yeah, so we had all kinds of things that people didn't see, because we didn't show it to them, so.
That's the thing with HSR, HVAC, you know, that's not the pretty thing, you put it in a referendum, right, everybody's, hey, got a new gym or something like that, but yeah, but we need this, this is more, but no one sees that.
But it's relatable, because we all need a new furnace sometimes.
That's right.
So it's relatable stuff and it is stuff that people are like, well, yeah, I gotta heat. So, it's relatable, even though it's not fun.
Right. Roof, for example, it's not fun, but it's.
It's not fancy, but you know.
Right.
What was your timeline? When did you start doing this?
The first remodel was what, a year ahead of time?
Yeah.
And we started, we were giving tours, we'd worked our thoughts on.
We were probably a year ahead.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Second one was probably a year again, because there was a lot of planning in the auditorium and gym, making sure we had type requirements and all of that.
Well, and we all, and we also had a fundraising component to that referendum, so that was a little bit different animal. So we actually fundraised in advance of the, in advance of passage. So we started fundraising, so we had pledges and started that process before we even passed our funding.
You're fundraising this for what specifically?
Because we, the boards had a number that they, again, based on the survey, did not want to exceed. And we knew that the project, to do it well, needed more money than we were going to go referendum for.
So you were fundraising for the money over what you would go referendum for?
Correct.
Okay.
Referendum was ten million, nine point nine something. We knew we had to get to closer to twelve. Our goal of fundraising was like two fifty to start, end up with eight hundred.
Eight fifty.
And then we were able, we also used some money from fund balance and to finish up and fill in the gaps of the funding that we needed.
What kind of fundraising did you do?
So it was grassroots, we had a, we had a fundraising committee and, and we set tiers. And within those tiers, we kind of mapped out based on the goal we wanted to get to, how many donors we needed at each of those tier levels, and we started at the top. And then worked our way down. So by the time it got to the everyman, what I refer to as the everyman, which is like the seat stuff, we already had the bulk of the money, but we wanted everybody to have buy-in opportunity. So we started at that top tier and then, so it was.
So it was you all approaching?
Personal phone calls, personal meetings, phone, yeah, yeah. It was. Yep.
Late nights, the flowers.
A lot of conversations, a lot of conversations. But it felt relationship too.
Yeah. Did you guys send your survey out after the first failed referendum? Because you went to new school first, right, and failed?
Yes.
Then you did the survey.
Yes.
Yeah.
We did not survey prior to that.
We just had a lot of meetings, I was on board at the time, and the board president felt that it was his job to get in front and lecture everybody about, here's what we're going to do. We sometimes only get ten people to show up, so I think one meeting, there's only one person. And when you have an entire gym reserved for the night, one person shows up and the presentation ends up only being ten minutes, because the one person already knows what the whole project's about. You can kind of see it right on the wall. Whereas when we did the survey with perceptions, everyone in the community had an option to tell us what is, they were looking for, and I believe we got back over four hundred surveys.
Yeah, so there's a person, they, they're so good at what they do, and there's a percentage tipping point that they know if you get X percentage back, your results are going to be almost spot on.
And it was?
We were, we were way over, we were doubling, we said the numbers need to be on return, so it worked out great.
But you said, they told you it'd be fifty one percent than it was? Fifty one?
Based on the results that we received, fifty one percent of the respondents were positive. It was in a dollar range and that's exactly.
Because the survey went out with dollar ranges and what it was we were looking to do and favorable and unfavorable, I mean, it was a lot, it was incredible matrix, there was only like twenty questions on the survey, it wasn't huge.
And they put that together for you and then obviously met with you guys and this was.
They went back and forth with us on that. They wrote everything up for us, they sent it out and took care of all the data.
And it was really pretty cool, and if you ever have the opportunity to look at their stuff, because we're excited, we're seeing these great numbers and they're like, hold up, timeout, you have to factor in X, Y, and Z. A lot of it was age, you know, so, so this age bracket goes heavier, so you have to factor them differently, so we learned a lot.
Can I ask what that cost to do that?
Yeah, I was going to say like seven, but might have been eight thousand.
Somewhere around eight thousand nine. But like I said, that data can be used, if you get the right questions, you can use that beyond what you're doing just in the school, right? Also what the community's perception of what's going on in the school, right?
Did you guys select a specific timing as far as when you held the referendum? Was it during the presidential election or regularly scheduled election? Or were you still, did it early enough where you still had that, that ability to set your own date?
We did one spring and one fall.
Yeah.
So one was in the fall and one was in the spring. One was president.
I don't know, one, what was one governor?
One was governor. One was governor, yep, yep. So that was a governor's race and then the other one, like I said, was a spring, so. Definitely more voters in the governor's race.
Yeah.
And the other, the other thing is working with that team, they told us when the best time was to go to, okay, don't just spitball it and say, we'll pick that date, let's go that day. They knew dates and best times to go and get your best return.
Did you guys have any debt coming off? Did you tie it to?
We had some debt coming off on our middle school, you know, so we balanced that on the first referendum that we did in high school.
Kenny, I read you wrestle, by the way. When we did the referendum for this building, the two different parts, how did, how did we, how did that all come out? I mean, how did we do it then when we did that?
Well, we kind of did the same approach as what Dodgeville did first, where we brought ourselves up the presentation. And actually, it wasn't pretty, it wasn't attended very well, but.
Actually, we did hold in the gym, it was.
It was attended well. And it, we went to referendum, did not pass. So we went back and not so much told the public or had public come in, it was more or less putting out a lot of information saying, this is where we're at with the roof, for example, this is why it needs to be replaced, we're at the end of its life cycle now. You know, obviously they, you know, people that are up here can see what we did with the the drive out front and a few other things that we did outside, so. That really pushed us over and then there was a lot of stuff to do in there with at that time, along with the technology front and when we went with charter school at the time as well, so. That helped push through the referendum to get to that point.
We also had two questions. One was for operating the genocide, one, the other was for the fitness center.
Correct, and the fitness center, we gave them two questions.
Right.
Hoping that the referendum would actually tilt the way we want.
Yeah, we kind of thought, if they got to, you know, maybe they're trying to help us out and answer, say, ask the one to know the other one.
That's right.
And it worked out that way, we were hoping after the vote, but.
Right, right.
Kenny, I don't recall, did anybody help us decide those things?
So initially when we came in with it, we had HSR here because they were the initial, they, they were the architect for the school, so they came in with that information and then that was the first referendum that failed and then we brought Tom Grendeski in and he gave us all the information we needed to have for building maintenance items that needed to be done. And that's what really catapulted us through getting to passing the referendum as to, okay, here's Dolly Valley, they're going to be associated with replacing the roof with asphalt drive and all the other stuff that we did at that time a three year cycle to get all that stuff pushed through in three years.
So Tom Grendeski is a contractor, so we would, what?
He's not.
Okay, so Tom Grendeski would be doing what HSR did for them.
Correct.
He did, and then.
He didn't, he provided the information, but we were the ones putting in the information.
Right, he didn't do any marketing.
He didn't do any marketing, so basically he gave us the information, it was our responsibility to put the information out for public input.
Do you know what he cost?
I do not recall what it was at that time. That's really racking my memory.
It's not cheap. I would still shoot less than HSR because he's not doing that marketing end of it. I mean, he seemed like they're more all in cars.
Right, and then the other, the other thing with Tom was that he was the checkpoint and all the subcontractors making sure that what was supposed to be done was being done.
So he was your general?
He was your general.
Technically, he was the general, yes, but he was also doing site business to make sure it was being done correctly.
So it sounds to me like he did similar to what Upper ninety was proposing. I mean, he came in and did the, yeah, this is, this is what the things you're going to need to be doing. Yeah, okay.
But he did it for feet and they wanted percentage. They wanted.
Correct.
Yeah, based on what I read through here, they wanted.
Yeah, that's where we kind of feel like, yeah, somebody's double dipping because Myron and whoever's going to want their own.
Right. Yeah, Tom, Tom's firm did it in his first three.
Straight feet.
Correct.
And you enjoyed your experience with.
Tom, I would work with Tom every day.
Yeah.
He's good, he's not, he's not pushy, he's.
He's not a bull shooter.
We came in and we had Leek in the elementary, remember? Those who are, you know, on the board recently, but. And Myron came back every time and they said, okay, we'll try this, we'll try this, we'll try this, and Tom would talk to him and say, said, you can. And Myron came back every time and they said, okay, we'll try this, we'll try this, we'll try this. And Tom would talk to him and say, said, you can try that. Right? He says, and it might work. However, if it doesn't, no, this is, and he wasn't trying to bully us and no, you're not doing this. Yeah, well, you can try that. However, this is what I see. And he's, I thought, really good.
I think when Tom went through that process with Myron, probably about six times.
Yeah, he did.
And then finally at the end of it, I think Myron conceded, say, okay, we're gonna do what Tom said.
So we had Myron.
We had Myron for our elementary addition.
Okay.
And that was where when the, on the heftus part of the building is leaking at the base of it. Obviously because of one poor design and two deterioration, cracking within the heftus. So with those parts, Tom said, okay, we have to take either A, all off or you have to go far, so far up on the building wall. Take that portion off and redo the whole entire thing. Well, Myron only lighted up the building, the wall, like eighteen inches the first time. So they did exactly that. So of course, over a few months. I'd say over a course of probably two years, it took to finally get to that point where they actually just.
So who's responsible for that in a situation like that?
Well, initially is Myron paid the cost on all that.
I did, Myron covered it all.
Myron covered it. I, I, yeah, Myron stepped up to the plate and they they covered that whole entire thing. So there was no cost to the school that's worked on that whatsoever.
And Carrie and Mike, you enjoyed your experience with Myron and HSR?
We had very good experiences with both of them. Yeah.
Does Myron do everything? I mean, or do?
No, they were our general. So they did not do everything. Yeah. So they contract, they managed other subs that were coming in, so they did not do all the work.
Did you have to pay a separate fee for the facility study that HSR had done previously?
Um, for the original?
The original one, yeah. Yeah, I don't remember the cost. That was when I first came on the board fifteen, sixteen years ago.
They're updating it now.
They're working on a new one for this referendum. HSR has been with us for seventeen years, so they know every building. They know where most of the pipes are in the ground. Or the things that are heading into walls.
Or the wires are coming underground so that we don't. Yeah, so we've had really good experiences with them. So they are, because. They did our last project, they're updating our facilities plan now so that all those new things are incorporated.
So the marketing piece that they did for you, was that just included with their general contracting?
That was Myron.
That was Myron. That was included in ours, yeah.
And their person that we worked with for that is phenomenal. Like, we still have lunch occasionally. She's just magnificent. She's a great, great girl and really good at what she does. So, but they did, you know, at that time, we didn't have a school PR person. We were trying to do those things on our own. And so to have somebody come in and actually design things for us was like, wow, this is so cool. We didn't do this ourselves. They were super helpful.
It's just hard to try and do these things as a board member and as a board, cause you can't get everybody together all the time. And Carrie and I have that on committees where we could at least zoom in now. I mean, the technology's crazy now. You can do everything from like cattle. But it used to be we would come together every two weeks and we would go through budgets and whittle and add and pull things. And and the whole process was so smooth with the team that we had. It really. The rest of the board didn't have to worry about it. They knew that if we came back with, here's what to change on it. Okay, good. They're, they're all happy. So we've been happy with what we have. We haven't had any issues with any of the remodels. Some of the last two that we've done, so luckily we haven't had any roof issues still. Like, that can be a pain.
Is there anything that you guys like just, Tom and you guys say, boy, if we go back, I would do this differently?
He would probably say we wouldn't have tried for the new school because.
No, I didn't think it was necessary. It really wasn't. We have, we actually have a building that's solid. We have no cracking. The remodel, when we first opened it up. Kids that, my daughter graduated from there. It was the first time she walked in, she didn't realize where she was. Because we had done such a nice job of bringing the school back to the way it was built in the sixties with open the hall window. You know, in the seventies, they tried to box in all the windows and put these little tiny windows in. It looked horrible. We've now got natural light through the whole building. Now electric goes down thirty-five percent from what they were previous. We've also added light tubes in areas. Those aren't leaking and they bring so much light in it during the day. In the commons, we don't even have lights on in the commons. It's just things like that that I I really love.
I think.
Securities, sorry.
Yeah, no.
Security stuff too, I suppose, I was gonna say.
Yeah.
That was addressed with the first edition that we put online, I suppose, making an office again to go through and get.
I think the best thing that came through the process that we used is community trust. Because, you know, we passed two referendums in a short period of time. And that second one never would have passed if the community didn't trust us. And they trusted us because we showed them the before. And then once the first process was done, you know, we had open houses and we brought them in to show them what they did for district. Um, and that just created so much trust that the second referendum.
Sixty forty.
Was there a bigger turnout for, you know, you had the fail for the new school, did that big number out there make more people take notice and say, hey, we need to. Onboard, you know, kind of, kind of oversized. Did more people turn out?
Even the people that support the schools voted against the new high school, cause I didn't think it was really necessary.
And part of it was nostalgia. You know, we, we all don't wanna see our school go away. So part of it was, it was good enough for me kind of mentality. Um, and so some of our work was working with those people and making them understand. It's, it's not nineteen sixty-three, it's different now. The kids, we teach differently, we, we learn differently. So technology's so different, so that, so there was just, we just did a lot of work. Um, in building relationships and and I do think that we built a lot of trust.
And we did tie in the history. Our old high school had carved relief, stone reliefs. And we had been saving them for years in either quarries or people's garages. We pulled all those back into the remodeled high school. The people that went to the old high school. That's the first thing they go look at is to see where these stone reliefs are. And we would put, we put the agriculture relief by the FFA portion of the building. Music and the arts are in the arts areas. The sports is down in the sports area. Um, people like to see that tie and the history coming back into the building. So we did as much as we could to bring everything that was old into the building and make it all new and, you know, match the necessities. Necessities of, you know, mid two thousands. They said the building should be good enough for fifty years. You know? Technology changes every day now. You're just trying to keep up with it. And it's, that's the stuff we don't see. You know, it's all up in the ceiling. It's just wires, wires and runners.
Stuff you're not fancy. But you're also talking about something that people don't think we teach anymore, which is technology education, right? So it's, it's shop. We don't, we don't teach that anymore, but we do. And so, right, it's just a lot different.
And we remodeled our entire shop line in Dodgeville. I mean, the areas where, where. Where cars and metals has been moved to the other side of the building. And HSR designed a really nice thing for us and, you know, it used to be you just walked into one big room. It was just a big garage. Well, we were able to break that up into a steam room and a metal shop and we added a greenhouse. A wholly, wholly new wood shop area and then the art room. And so those four areas really work with each other quite a bit and coordinate to do things, cause they're all now sharing the same area. It works out really well. Wish you good luck. It's, it's hard to teach and educate people about the stuff that people see. But the community also has to understand that. You need those technology pieces in order to educate kids nowadays. And you, you need heat, you need technology, you need water. As long as you can have a building. It's just not fancy. Until you start adding rectangles on your building, that's where they get excited.
Right, and and I think, you know, while our communities are very different at their core, like we're all working class people. And so I do think that that core stuff, people could wrap their arms around. It really could. So once you showed them like, this is the boiler system and this is what's going on, they were like, oh, yeah.
We, we need the votes from the older people that don't have a kid in school anymore, maybe don't even have grandkids, but they're the ones that you need to sell that to. Cause I think that's the stuff that they're gonna buy into.
Exactly, it really is. And they will, as long as you're open and you're communicating with them. And you care about their input. I mean, that, it's just so important for people to be able to say. I agree with you or I don't, but you're right. Cause your school needs a new heating system. I support that.
Did HSR provide you details if you changed something out, the cost savings? Like anything along those lines?
So we went through that process in our planning. So, you know, when, when we would have those every two week meetings that Mike was talking about. Um, we would talk about what the budget looked like and. Are we over, are we overrunning? Do we look like things are going a little higher than they should? And what changes we should make in order to bump that back down. So we talked about that regularly.
But I would say most of the time, I'd say all the time, we were always ahead of the budget. And we were never dipping into contingency until we got to the end where we knew that we could use the contingency to finish some of the things. That were likes, but weren't needed to have. And so we were able to do a couple of things on each of the remodels where we were able to use that extra contingency money to finish things.
And I would say that Mike and I probably both have gotten grounded a lot in the process. Because there were things that we all wanted, we were all excited about, but then sitting in those budget meetings, it was like we became the X-Men. You know, so, well, we would really love to do that and we can't afford to, so it's taken off the list. And it, it was really hard, but we learned a lot doing that as well. We, we wanted the project and in order to have the project, we had to sacrifice some of the nicer things.
Your auditorium, that was in the second referendum, right?
We did an auditorium, just second referendum.
Yeah, the gym and the auditorium were one referendum.
Yes, and, and there was a lot of conversation about separating them. There were a lot of people that felt like we shouldn't try and build for both. And we, both of us are arts people and we knew that if we went for gym, the auditorium would never happen. And there were also people that felt like we already have enough gyms, but I care about the auditorium. So if we wouldn't have done them together, I'm not sure that either one would have passed.
But that was one of those where Myron, HSR and the survey that we put out gave us the information we needed. Cause we, you know, several of us could sit around the room and discuss what we think's gonna happen. The survey was just pinpointing where everybody was on what we need to do. And that, that allowed us to focus. With what it was we had to discuss and what the public know. You know, you weren't just throwing darts at a big wall. You were actually focused on that board.
Makes sense. If you'd surveyed, there you go to the referendum and you, and you're putting questions on there that the majority of people in the survey told you you need. The chances of passing, obviously exponentially probably increase that way.
And the survey also allows you to put information out there. You know, we're looking at doing this and here's why we need to. What are your feelings about? And you can pack good information. Some people wrote quite a bit, some people were just like, yes. But you, you do get a lot of information. And it, it works out well and you can use that data for quite a long. It's an exciting process.
It is, it's really fun. I really enjoy all of the projects that we're working on in elementary school project right now. Um, and they're, they're really fun and they're really gratifying. You know, the gym and auditorium project, I, I'm a lifelong Dodgeville girl and. Um, to see an auditorium in our community has just been amazing. And to know that I was part of it, I'm really proud of it.
I've been on that stage every day for the last three months building the set. I've been having fun with that. I'm not happy that we weren't able to get an orchestra pit, but.
It's one of the sacrifices we made.
Two hundred thousand ballers. All for toes. And now we just remove a couple of rows of seats in the front row on the left side, we're good.
What play you doing?
Little shuffle horse. We've got a full set that's sixty feet wide and rotates and all kind of fun stuff. But now we have stages to do that. It's eight and a half times our old stage. You're not sitting on a gym floor. And the new gym is beautiful, you know, got the track up above. You can walk around while you're watching wrestling, volleyball, basketball. You know, whatever's going on down there, gymnastics. Spaces turned out great.
Yeah. Stadium seating in the.
Yeah. Going into the halls and a little bit. Yeah, I mean, communication with the public, that was key for us.
Would you two be open to sharing your email address with us so that we could, if we have questions?
Of course.
That we forget, but you answered tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, you sent me a note, right?
Yes, I did, yeah.
You and me have requests, we can just get back to you and.
Sounds perfect.
Just on the reminder.
I just have one last question.
Sure.
Did you guys tour any schools for inspiration?
Yeah.
Like where, what stood out?
Why didn't you come here?
So, so the honest answer to that is, we did go, you know, HSR kind of led that and, and took us. To places that would be inspirational to the projects we were working on. So we, we did look at a lot of gyms and auditoriums.
We were looking at gyms and auditoriums on, what, two days? And we circled the corridor of the state. We were up in Nina.
We went out to Iowa.
Yeah, we were in Independence, Iowa. We were all up and down the east coast of Wisconsin. And we did all that in two days.
Blueberry.
So all these projects and it, it helped us define where it was that we were looking to.
Sure, definitely.
And, and it really did kind of open your eyes to, oh, I hate that and that's awesome to do that. And. And HSR went with us and Myron went with us. And so they were there to stay to pop our balloons and say, no, can't do that. Which they did a lot to us. But it was really fun to tour those spaces and, and see. Again, it's, it's just about pride. You know, I see a difference in pride in our kids in the facilities changes that we've done. They're proud of the, they're proud of the facility. They're proud when they walk in and other people walk in and go, wow, this gym's super cool. Like, they're really proud of it. And that just leads out into the community. And, and the community did it for us, so.
Do you have specific contacts that you could share with us on those two places? When Randy reaches out to you?
Yeah. Wish you good luck.
Yeah. You can do it.
It seems like overwhelming, especially Kenny and those guys. Really spearheaded that in the past and none of us have done this before, so we lost you.
Well, but look at, he showed up when you called him.
He did.
Well, and that's what you need. I wasn't on the board. And so you, you get people that are invested and that care and that understand. And with those people standing there next to the seven board members. Yeah.
Thank you all so much.
Yep, do you guys need me for any more?
Um, did you find anything when you looked at the comparison of what the other place does compared to what?
I thought a lot of what they were talking about is a lot of what Tom had previously talked to us about.
Okay, so they would do about the same thing and Tom was likely not cost so much.
I would say so.
Okay.
That would be my gut feeling on that.
Okay, but Tom did not do marketing, but that doesn't mean he does it now.
That doesn't mean he does now or doesn't have someone that he can refer you to for that.
Right, okay. And he is technically the general contractor. Does he hire the people?
When we did the last stuff, we went through him on it, yes.
Okay.
Actually, we did a, you know, we got your bid in at this time and then he was at the.
Yep, he handled all that. Yep, he handled all that.
But my case is in.
Yes.
Right, Myron, yeah. So if you're gonna hire a general contractor for saying that you will do it at the school edition. Yes, then you're gonna have to have a general contractor.
But Tom can also do the facility study?
Yes, Tom. Yes, Tom can, should be able to do the facility study that you're looking for.
Myron can, not, but HSR can?
HSR is doing it, I'm sure Myron can.
Myron probably can.
They have engineers and. HSR's just more familiar with our facilities.
How did you decide who to go to, all three of you, when you, you know, found these people?
Well, when we went to refer them the first time, we went to with HSR. And that's when it completely fell on its face.
Yeah.
So then when we brought back the stuff that we had to do for operational wise, that's when Tom came into play. And gave us all the information, so that's how we kind of just navigated with Tom all the way through what we need to do on what passed.
Okay.
At that time, I don't think he was any better at that time.
No.
He is now.
He is now.
He started his own business since that one.
Right.
Okay.
And we worked with him since too.
Yeah.
But how did you end up with HSR the first time?
First time is because they did this addition to elementary school, they were the architect for that, that side of the building.
And they were also the, Myron was also the con- construction.
Myron was the general contractor for that site.
Who was the last place that did our facility study, who would have the last information?
HSR would probably have that.
HSR. So Tom has not done it.
Tommy has not done it, other than saying this is what you gotta do for a roof, lighting upgrades and that kind of stuff. If you wanna do a.
Room up on, he did.
Right. So that, that is what Tom would have. If you wanna do a complete full building. Facility study, then you, you're gonna have to go through HSR for that.
Okay.
Well, upper ninety.
Well, ours is cheaper, upper ninety can already do.
Right, but you gotta remember, they're charging you a percentage fee.
No, right, but they did the same, they wanted to do it too.
Yeah, we do too, but you gotta look at where's your cost going to.
Well, we have the opportunity with them to do the study and then walk away, like we don't have to proceed with them. If we already have money.
Study would be yours based on the information I read. Right, you, you have a walkaway fee of, I figured what the dollar amount was in here, but you have a walk. Right, you have a walkaway fee of that information, yes. Now. If you're gonna do an addition. I can't say that upper ninety is probably the way you want to go because the architect will not be involved with that information that they provided. So if you're gonna do that, I would highly recommend going through architectural.
What?
You pay them anyway, you might as well have them do the. Because I guarantee is these two will not talk to each other.
Okay.
Once they walk away.
Right. Upper ninety's only gonna talk to somebody else if we keep them.
Yeah, you need them involved, yeah.
Okay.
You paid on the walkaway fees, that's, there you go.
Any other questions? I'm sure we will have some later.
I'll send you an email.
Sounds good.
Carrie, thank you.
You bet.
Unexpected bonus.
Right.
And like I said, if you need me again, just let me know.
We will, at least send out your cell phone number.
Carol has it.
I know where you live, if all.
You know where I'm at, so, not that far away.
Thanks, Kenny. So the first thing we have to decide is whether we're probably gonna do. Right?
Well, you're gonna need to decide that in the scope of your project.
Well, don't we need a facility study to decide what our project is? And to decide if we wanna do that whole, which I didn't, that's the first I heard of.
What's that?
Yeah.
First you heard what?
About the egg shop.
That honestly was one of the first things I heard about when I.
Well, we haven't really talked about the scope of what the government's gonna do, so. Bracing ideas, yeah.
Yeah, I guess, you know. Given that, I don't want, but looking at it at all, other than like the building.
And one thing that we talked about was a parking lot and we had a bit of a question.
That's reasonably straightforward though, I mean. You can just have a, you know. Any contractor could give you numbers on that, that's.
When we put the one out front, we had a bigger plan for a bigger parking lot.
That one.
Oh, so, um, first, yeah, so basically like at the middle of the school, you would have. Gone each way and come in the other way, so it'd be double what it is, but that was not, it didn't make it.
So, part of the information that, you know, depending on which direction we go in, but part of looking at the long range stuff is. We're gonna give, be giving you some information on enrollment projections because that will play a role, right? In, in, not in, you know, replacing boilers or roofs because those are gonna happen no matter how many kids we have. But, you know, this, you know, do we do something where we're renovating some of the buildings for different purposes, et cetera? So, we've got that, I've got a preliminary one, uh, that I'll be sharing with you guys actually at the night. And looking at budget forecasts. Because that's gonna play a role too, I mean, we know what our debt is coming off. But what does that declining enrollment, which it is? How does that affect the budget situation? And some of that, we're not, I mean, it's educated guesswork, right? Because we know, we're pretty confident based on what I heard at a, was the regional meeting last week. The, the, the state assembly and the state senate are pretty much gonna stay the way they are. You know, a few people changing, but the party of powers will stay. The governor's office is the wild card. And there's, there's a belief that if the incumbent wins, then funding for education will remain at least about where it's at. There's a belief that if the challenger wins, that that's not the case. Because that person has been very outspoken about his views on public education and they're not positive. So, those are all factors that will come into this whole equation as well. And so, part of, part of my job responsibility to you as the board in this regard is, is giving you that information. So you've got all of that as you're factoring in exactly this, what ultimately becomes the scope of the project.
What's our next step?
Have you heard from upper ninety?
Uh, they sent me an email today just saying, you know, that I, I informed them that we were having a special meeting. Um, and they just said, you know, hope they have a good meeting. So they, they worked, there wasn't any pressure, I, I mean. They, they have not put any pressure or anything on me or anybody else that I know of, unless they reached out to any of you, but I doubt that.
I got, I got a private message, but. Alright, because I know one of them.
Oh, okay.
Where are they at?
I went to college with one of the guys.
Oh, okay. So, yeah, I think your basement mess.
It was super awkward.
Yeah, I bet.
That's why I brought it up, but, um. I kind of blew it off and said I had company, so I wasn't gonna talk to him about it, he wanted to have a call with me and I was like.
Hmm.
Yeah. So I said we were re-meeting on it soon, so you would give him an update then.
And that's, that's what I told him as well.
How does everybody feel about the information we got regarding that?
I mean, I put a lot of stock in what Kenny said, just based on his experience.
I did too.
He didn't, he didn't think like, that was the route to take.
It seems like it's very fluffy, like it's a lot of Belgian muscles and the architect, what he presented to us, when I remember. Like accordion walls, like, I'm sorry, we're not, we're not, or like, we're not a huge school and we're not going to. Necessarily need all the fancy. Did you kind of get that vibe a little hard too? Yeah, like instead of having actual walls, like you can just pull walls away and put walls back up.
That's a return to the seventies, by the way.
Yeah. Their kids can just sit in the hallways and on the floor and. It was very, I know, a lot of, some of the stuff, and that's why I asked the questions about. Okay, do you have the information if we change something out? Like the actual projection, how much money we're gonna save? Because I think that's good data to have to show, here's the reason why.
But did they know they were gonna save thirty five percent on electricity by putting in all those windows, like was that part of it?
So that's the one thing I did like about upper ninety and that information. Um, which I don't, I'm gonna guess, and we're all guessing on Tom, but I'll take Kenny's word for it.
So who, who would be the one to call like HSR and Tom and talk about these things to see if they offer those, all things also?
Uh, that would probably be under my.
Okay.
My purview, I guess, on behalf of you as a board. And I certainly could do that. I mean, I think Josh has got Tom's contact information that I certainly could find, HSR would be easy to find.
Right, and it sounded like they would give you, they would give you their contact.
Yeah, yeah, Mike, Michael sent it, that information.
Because that would be helpful to know if they would, the other ones would do that before we make a decision. Maybe if everybody, like what you just said, send them an email about that, what, uh, so that you know the things we're funding. So, to know that if they do, you know.
What questions we want to have answers to, so they can know what we're wanting to.
Well, like what about, what about a survey? Well, I'd like.
Like what does the community want?
I mean, I, if we're gonna get this sucker.
I think that that's definitely something, is that yet, though?
I, I would tell you, they did it after they did the facility study.
Yeah, okay.
The, the reason they did, and other districts have done the same thing, by the way, that firm is like. Triple A rated by anybody who's used them at the university. Um, no, I'm talking about the cert, the school perception survey. Their, their reputation is.
Astounding.
Very good, yes, a lot of districts use them for exactly the reason I showed them.
No, I think absolutely.
Because the questions are right, you're geared towards what.
Right, I mean, you heard, heard Mike and Carrie talking about, they, they structured their questions. To match the things that they wanted to do, well, until we know exactly what we wanna do, it's hard to put a survey in. So.
Yeah.
But then they'll tell you too, if there's something different out there, the survey will tell you, oh, this is what the community wants, so it's a lot easier to. I would think, a lot easier to try to pass a referendum when you're going, asking questions that the survey tells you they want.
Exactly.
I would love to see their survey. After a format.
Well, you know what, it. Well, it's been a while, like, I'm, I'm betting they did another one because they work at an elementary party, my guess is you can probably find it on a, on their website. But, um, yeah, I mean, they were clear with the second one with the gym and the, the auditorium. The reason they did what they did is because they had the information from the survey.
Right.
And they were pretty confident based on the survey results that they could pass.
Even, even the part where they remember they were saying that they put them both in the same question because they knew from the survey.
Have both the people on the one and the other.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, and a lot of times people do split those. Because they, they're confident that one of them will pass, but they, they're afraid the other one will fail because.
We need to prove earmarks, so.
Yeah, and in their case, they knew, we compare these because it'll be more likely we get them all, and clearly that's why.
Well, whoever we pick for our facility.
Study.
Study, whether it be HSR or.
Excuse me.
I mean, the upper ninety, but yeah, Tom, for instance, whoever. But whoever we pick, like HSR and the Myron construction, we know that they were together already with the survey people. Because that's exactly what they said, they said the survey went off of Myron and HSR's information. They all worked together with that survey question.
One thing I like about what they were saying with HSR was them doing a lot of that marketing, that Kenny had mentioned. With Tom, Tom just gave. The board the data and then the board did something with it. I don't know, and maybe it's just allowed select you, but. Um. Virginia Mary was talking about, like, the trust in the board and in the school and stuff. I don't know that we're there right now, like, I would, I would almost think it would be worth spending a little extra to have someone else do that marketing. For us versus just giving us the data and then us doing what the board did in the past and just putting it out there. So that's, that's just a thought, but I think that might be my well spent. To pay a little more for HSR.
Dodge was a little different animal than Highland too.
Yeah.
That's what I was thinking too.
You know, I, I mean, people. There's a lot of people that'll talk to one of us and trust us more than.
True.
We're Dodge, we're dealing with more businesses and just a larger population. We need both, we need both.
I like Kenny's point of. Harry, we took up the ninety and then HSR, it kind of doesn't make sense.
I don't, I don't think.
Right.
Oh, he said they're not gonna talk after the one, she got one, he like.
Hundred percent correct. That's, that's kind of how I feel from the start, was there a kind of like this piece that's in there, but we're gonna be double dipping.
Middle man, like, get a little here and a little there.
I'd like to have some conversations or have you have some conversations with Typer, that's me and Myron and HSR to find out what.
Yeah, and we can.
They'll offer it in their cost.
Well, we can certainly arrange with, with, I would imagine with Tom and HSR and Myron. Um, to, to come in and do a presentation, I would say that you get to the point where we're gonna do, you know, put things out for bid. You're gonna, you, you're gonna want with the, the cost of something like this, you're, obviously you're gonna need at least three decent bids. You know, and, and they mentioned, you know, they, they got bids from all of the, the heavy hitters in school construction. At Dodgeville and, you know, Myron's been around a long time, Kramer Brothers has been around a long time. Bindorf has been around a long time. They do, all three of those companies do a tremendous number of schools. You know, and it depends on the scope of the project. Now, our project, if it, if it's just HVAC and some easy remodeling, they might not, some of them might not be interested because it's, it's not enough work for them. You know, we don't know that, but until we identify what the scope of the project may be.
I think that's our next step or first step, I think you're right.
Yeah.
We need to get Mike in here for building grounds or just with all of us and sit down, we need to say this is what we know we need and what we want, and then we need to bring one of those people in to tell us. To do, yes, but you also need us.
And we do have that list, we have that list of all the projects to, to do, not to do, but kind of a wish list or a, you know, a lot of projects over the years that. That we can share with you too, that Mike's got.
So, yeah, I do, I do think that's probably the next step is to have Mike come in and talk about it from his perspective with that list. Uh, and anything that may have been added to it, um, and whether that's for the whole, whole board or the buildings and grounds. I, my recommendation would be the whole board, frankly, at this point, and, and, you know, whether that's the buildings and grounds committee, sir. Sitting as a committee in the whole for, for that kind of stuff. Or it's just another special meeting like this one. But I, I do think it's, with this, especially at this stage, it's probably best for you all to hear the same information at the same time, if possible.
We did talk about previous COVID, of taking the B and G and going to see, as they talked about different. Shops, tech head stuff, just seeing where the new, in schools our size.
Yeah.
You know, yeah, definitely worth it, but obviously. COVID stuff, that wasn't an option, so.
Well, that's something then also that HSR did for them, right, arranged for all the guests.
Yeah, 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 once they hired them as their contractor and their architected PR. Yeah, then that's what they did, they, that's pretty, that's a pretty normal process actually. Um, for the contractor to do that, if they, they want, you would need to request it, but they would be surprised if you didn't request it. Uh, just to get ideas.
I know that this is gonna be getting out there more. You know, talking about a little bit more, get a plan sooner than later because people are gonna be asking us, oh, we're talking about our effort and then, oh, we don't really.
Right.
We just need to get it figured out and at least the main, I mean, we know we can do all this stuff, but we might need a few.
Decided on.
So do we wanna make a. Meeting date for that, or will we do that at one of the other meetings?
Um, you could, I mean, yeah, you could determine a meeting date now, or if you wanna wait till the ninth, it'd give, give you guys a chance to look at your calendars more, or however you wanna do it. We are, we're getting into a little bit busy time of the year, with the, the holidays coming up, so. Just identifying what dates work best for everybody. So if you wanna set it tonight, that's certainly, certainly would not be a bad idea. Because I know the conversations that we have had. We've always, the, it's always been kind of like fall of twenty twenty four, right? Because we've got debt coming off. Because we've got death coming off, basically, at that time point. The, the scary thing is, fall of twenty twenty-four. Is only two years away now, uh, and you guys all know that, with all the things that will have to be done in order to prepare for that. It's the, we've got plenty of time, but it's gonna happen faster than you pick it up.
Yeah, they were, they were saying there was like a year, but I think stuff going on now, it's, that's the stuff, so.
Yeah.
So is it something we're looking at, like, September, November, or December, or is it something you wanna wait to, like, get speaker, or, um, HSR and Myron to come, come to say?
Well, what I heard everybody say is that we wanna have our meeting with Mike and go through all of the.
Okay.
The list and, and show us everything he thinks first, and then that would be the next step.
Alright.
Yeah, I think so too.
So if we're looking at Wednesdays, like, the twenty-third time is not a good idea, the day before Thanksgiving, so maybe the thirtieth? I don't wanna do it in another week in a row at sixteen.
Well, and I would say, I would, I would not be available on the sixteenth, because then you can't have a meeting without me, if you can, easily, but, um, I would not be available.
But you would on the thirtieth?
Yeah, thirtieth.
So we're calling another special meeting on November thirtieth?
Yeah.
Six o'clock?
Uh, yeah, that works for all of us.
Special O B G?
Uh, I think, just call it, we'll call it a special one, I think.
They can pass you, because we'll all be there.
It's, it's cleaner that way? Most casual, quick.
Six o'clock?
Sure.
Just fine.
Yes.
Five thirty.
I was terrified.
We're five thirty.
Yeah.
And I've stayed out of this.
Actually, I think you're terrified. Okay.
Are we going to contact upper ninety, or are they out of the question?
Uh, I will just tell them that we are continuing the discussion, uh, because until you make a decision, I mean, as far as officially, um, we can help, but.
I mean, would you tell them that we're, we're going to be interviewing other?
I think, to be fair.
Yeah.
Yeah, I should tell them that they probably are not the leaders in the clubhouse at this point. I'll be gentle, though, I promise.
Okay. I'll make a motion to adjourn to closed session, please.
So, seven forty-four, and I think you've got.
I got that, I got that part.
Oh, okay, you got this?
You didn't hear the second?
We're not.
Did the second, you're.
Well, I got you, but.
Did you do the second on my?
Yeah, so did Will. Yes, no?
Yes.
All right, we have a motion by Schimmick and a second by Landville to adjourn to closed session, we'll take a full hall vote on that.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Spanish?
Yes.
Palm Camp?
Yes.
Jury?
Yes.
Daniel? Mitchick? Timmy?
Here.
Yes. Okay.
Myra's just gonna take a minute to.
Thank you.
You two.
Yeah, I don't care.